Welcome to our meeting. Um, I have, uh, is there any agenda additions or deletions for tonight?
We're gonna do an executive session.
Let's, um, actually, does he wanna make the motion that you have an executive session?
To the very end?
Yes, very end.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we do, uh, executive session regarding personnel at the very end of the meeting?
I'll second that. Anyone wanna make that? If you're a little further. Conversation on that issue, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any other additions or deletions?
Um, I'd ask for a motion on August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen minutes.
Admiral, we accept on subject to corrections?
Second.
Is there any corrections or deletions?
There's one thing, uh, the second page on their highway towards the bottom before, just above, the paragraph bef- above old business. Said, uh, Mike, when you asked me about the Creek Road and Middle Road, wasn't that Creek Road, Watcham Mountain?
Yes.
So that correction needs to be made from Middle Road to Watcham Mountain Road.
Oh, okay, yep.
That was the painted lines.
Correct.
For the stop. Anything else anybody see?
Creek Road, Watcham Mountain.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope, I don't think so.
Are you all in favor of the, uh, suggestion and with the minutes of August twenty-sixth? I thought you wanted the mallet.
No, something, something good.
Yeah, that's down on the other end.
Is there any other corrections or deletions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, I haven't seen, oh, okay, the, uh, AP and payroll warrants were all floating drifting here. So we can pass that, if you remember, as we go through our meeting. Is there any public comments? Alright, highway, equipment needs. Wanna speak to that?
Uh, that was, I believe, the, um, conversation we had about possibly with Rutland Town and Moore Tractor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was unable to reach Byron Hathaway late this afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and as far as an update on what's going on with highway crew, we've been, uh, doing shoulder work on East Clarendon Road. We have just a little bit left tomorrow morning, for about hour and a half, that'll be completed. And on North Choosberry Road, this short section that got paved will be hopefully finished up tomorrow with shoulder work. And then we can get back to our other projects on East Temeth Road. And then we're gonna work on Coeur d'Alene Road on the Big Hill and try to figure that out with what needs to be done and try to.
Amen.
Can I just say that, um, somebody came to me and said on East Clarendon Road, they're going very fast and to send the sheriff up?
I've already been contacted with the sheriff.
And it works on, you guys must have fun with.
Oh, it's, it's unbelievable. A lot of people are pretty good, but.
It's a shortcut.
I was gonna say, that's getting used as a shortcut.
Just incredible.
Yep.
It's incredible.
Also, didn't you have an issue over there with, uh, driveway entrance that's not really a driveway entrance?
Yeah, we got a landowner that started using a driveway. A part of his lawn is a new entrance. And I've been on board with, um, actually called Mike about it and with Jeff, our zoning administrator and stuff. And there's other issues there.
Yeah.
That we're gonna address.
Alright, well, I just wanna make the public aware that we had that discussion.
On East Clarendon Road, just south of Wendy Lane.
You have to have a driveway permit in this town to have a driveway. We'll see where that goes. Um, one other thing was, uh, on Gravel Pit Road, did you guys go up and do anything there?
We haven't, haven't yet. We gotta get this paving project completed with the shoulders and everything, and then that side of town will be, should be in good shape other than. There's another thing I wanna bring up, um, had a couple calls about a roadside mowing and that's gonna be ongoing when we can, able to do it time-wise.
Yeah. So, anybody calls, anybody, that's a priority, but not a high priority, I would assume that's what you're saying. Does anybody have a, is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Anybody have anything for the road commission?
Just, I was asked one question about the wood delivery and I told him I had no idea when it would happen.
That's another.
Low priority.
Another project that we're gonna have to, we'll work into somewheres.
Yeah.
This, later on this fall.
Yeah.
Alf, did you have a question?
Yeah, there were a couple of things. Was, I think at the last meeting you said the state was gonna look at Gorge Road.
Yeah.
And what, did they come down and look at?
Um, a guy from, Kyle from Berry, the state, came down. We had a, um, actually a pretty decent meeting with them, him and three contractors that were local contractors that were called in. Um, and actually, it worked out great because, uh, with the low, three local contractors plus the state guy Kyle, myself, it was a lot of brainstorming. And there was some different ideas shot around and good ideas. Different sets of eyes and minds of looking at it different ways.
Did they accept responsibility for it and would plan to fix it on their dime?
I'm pushing them. I am pushing them. They won't come out. They wanted us to do some of the work on the road and I told them, we don't have time to haul material, we got so many projects going on ourselves and.
Beneficial for the select board to write whoever trans a letter and say, we, I mean, it is our position, that it's your fault and that we're, our expectation is the state will fix it with their money and not the town money?
I think that's the way he understood it.
It's been put a.
Problem is, is.
It's not ready.
That you said, I think, that's what he understood.
Well, there's three different meetings that I attended over there and all three, meaning, correct me if I'm wrong, the state admitted the fact that, one, they have the three coverts coming into one ditch and we, and the town has a bigger covert that has handled it in the past, but then when the state was trimming their trees over there, because the FAA said that they have to cut those trees down the end of the runway, that's where this all started. Because they put a one twenty-four inch covert in this ditch.
Temporary.
Temporary, and then built the road over it so that you can get to the next section of, of logging. And so everybody knows that that is the.
Everybody being.
State and the town and the engineers.
Those individuals from the state and they're different than the ones that came down.
This guy here is, this one here, I, actually Heidi reached out to Brian Sanderson, District Three in Mendon. And Heidi, it was next day, we had a response from this Kyle, from Berry, and it's the first he's heard about it. And so it's really.
I mean, just right there, Mike, that, you know, these guys, but whoever those guys were that you talked to, it was your understanding that they accept the blame and, and they accept the fact that the state's gonna fix it. But then you got the district trans guy that says, I've never heard of this before.
That's why we, you know, went that direction because we didn't hear anything back. And I guess in the conversation you must have had when you weren't here shooting breeze with Heidi, that that's when the topic came up and so Heidi actually brought it up.
Whoever the head guy is at V Trans.
There seem to be no head guy.
Yeah, well, there is, the Secretary of Transportation up there, uh, right, I mean, it just.
Maybe we can draft a letter up to.
I, I would draft a letter to him and copy it to the district guy.
V Trans, there's two separate government agencies. There's V Trans and then there's, um, the, um, Agency of Aviation. And that is who got in touch with Cash and who had the meeting and asked those three contractors to come along with him for that last meeting at Gorge Road. V Trans, this is not a V Trans issue.
Well, whoever, whose ever issue it is, seems though, our expectation is they're going to fix, pay to fix it. And yet, I mean, what I'm hearing, there's not that uniform understanding at the state level that.
In our conversations, each meeting we've had up there, I stressed it out that it's not gonna be on the town's people, taxpayers of town back to pay for this damage that was caused by the airport.
And they all, three meetings that, and that's the meetings that I attended as well, it's my understanding that they tried to, well, can the town do this, can it? And it was made clear that we didn't cause this, this worked for twenty years.
And how long are we gonna let them drag it on?
Well, they wanna open up the road. They want the Gorge Road open for safety reasons because of the end of the runway. And that's, I said to them, I says, I said, look, I says.
I don't wanna get into anything lengthy here, I just wanna make a statement. I would take that video and I would give it to the Agency of Natural Resource on our ball field.
That's a good suggestion, that one that you have?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see if we can, by the end of this week, try and get that, up to that young lad there that came down. We have his email address.
The one that, is that Kyle that come down?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause they did, I showed it to all them that day.
Yeah.
Did anybody talk to Brian Callum or yet?
Has anybody talked to Dave Potter, he's on the.
I was gonna say, and Dave Potter's on the transportation committee. Seems, seems to me like that would be the first step.
I hadn't talked to him. Have you talked to Dave? Oh, the, the idea would be to call Dave, see if we can meet up with him, then show him that.
Mm-hmm. The video and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So let's see, see where that goes. Anything else under highway?
Nope, that's all I can think of right now.
Just one other quick question, Cash. Have you had the chance to speak to Matt about that covered bridge?
Yes, I did.
Oh.
And he said within like three, two to three weeks.
Oh, good.
Get it done. And he requested that one of us crew members be there, so I'll probably be there that night to do it.
Okay, old business, uh, proposed marijuana ordinance. And we've had that posted for people to, to look at and stuff.
On the website, okay.
Alright, so.
Hmm? It didn't get posted around town?
I couldn't.
It's on there.
Did it get, but it had to be posted in four places, so did it get posted is the question?
Uh, no, that didn't have to, that didn't have to be, cause it was not a.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now you do, now you.
Now, well, if we pass the ordinance tonight, then it has to.
It has to go five places.
Be posted.
Okay, cute, okay. Just wanna make sure we're within law.
So, um, we've all reviewed this, had long discussions. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion with regard to passing this ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we pass this ordinance, um, pursuant to, uh, discussion about it.
Is there a second for discussion?
I will second that.
Okay. Uh, we have to remember, there's limits, so when we, if we approve this tonight and sign it, it's sixty days and forty-four days to have a petition, but sixty days to have it posted to make it legal.
Five places, right?
Five places, it has to be posted. Is there any other discussion? Is there any public discussion? Anybody from the public have any?
I, I mean, I was just thinking that, you know, these courts are always gonna try to interpret what your intentions are. And I think you made it pretty clear in this, but, um, it seems that with your, uh, motion to adopt it, if you could expound upon what it is that you're trying to do. And I'm just saying, this is a belt and suspenders kind of approach here to, you're saying exactly what you want to do here, but also having in the record that it's your intention, since it's our intention too, whatever, that we want to adopt the ordinance as trans.
So you're saying in that motion, have the purpose.
Ha- have, just state it, so then somebody can't.
Yes.
Fifteen years from now say, well, the, what their real intention was to, you know, based on here, must have been to do this or that or whatever.
Well, can, can we then, uh, revise the motion that was made by Rick by just stipulating, um, C Section One purpose of a broad explanation as opposed to reining? What are purposes? Because that says purpose right here.
Yeah, but I, I'm saying the intention, you know, your intention is that you do not wanna have dispensaries or pot shops, as you call it, and whatever else it is that you specifically want to exclude. I, I'm just saying, do you have to do it? Probably not, but I'm just thinking it's a kinda a belt and suspenders way.
Well, the other option is, we had a motion made and seconded, and we're having this discussion which is on tape.
Yeah.
And we'll be recording.
Are these, are these a formal, are these?
Yes, yes.
Formally a record of the meeting?
Your legal.
Peg TV is.
Peg TV is, well, I, you know, sometimes tape recordings aren't.
I think it says, any electronical recording is a legal document.
And that's, that's going all the way back to what was said when we were looking at the ball field and stuff. That's how we know, um, because we asked that question of leagues.
I think, looking at your purpose, the purpose does exactly what Alf's asking you to do though.
Yes.
Because the purpose is very, very specific, in my opinion.
Maybe just reading it, is that what you need them to do?
Oh, if Rick wants to make the motion and then it, and then he reads the first paragraph?
Well, the motion was made and already seconded. The Chair of the Select Board will read to the public on Peg TV. Is hereby declared that recreational marijuana sales and the operation of recreational marijuana dispensaries within the town of Clarendon, Vermont is affected with a public interest and that the regulation of such dispensaries is necessary in the interest of the safety and convenience of the public. And we'll go to Section Two, which is prohibition, the sales and/or dispensing of recreational marijuana and/or recreational marijuana products, including but not limited to solvents, edibles and seedlings within established limits of the town of Clarendon are hereby prohibited with the exception of marijuana specifically dispensed for medical purposes by a licensed marijuana dispensary as defined in Title Eighteen of Vermont Statutes. Alright? Is there any other? And we all have to sign this, so there's been a motion made, seconded, we've had discussion. I think, uh, we explained what our purpose for this ordinance is. So, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Let the record show that all five members agree. And I shall start signing. Alright.
Oh, I guess I don't.
Now let's go back to the State E nine-one-one request to rename Coburn Court Streets.
Just wanna give you a status update on that, because we've got two state agencies involved, okay? Department of Housing and E nine-one-one. E nine-one-one made the request to have those streets named. I have yet to get in contact with Department of Housing to find out, because they, they're in charge of the park. So, it's kinda their say-so, how the street, what they wanna do. And I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page before, obviously, the Select Board ultimately has the authority to name the streets. But wanna make sure everybody's on the same page before we do that and we haven't gotten together on that yet. So, work in progress, stay tuned.
You have a question, Art?
Yeah, I have a question. Since when does the Select Board have any authority over private property?
Um, well, that was comments that we've all made while this discussion has been brought into the, um, our meetings. And at one point, I think we had this years ago, where we did, not when I say years ago, I don't mean twenty years ago. I'm talking about when they first took that over. Um, I, and then later on, I think Heather got involved with the same kinda discussions. And that's when they said, oh, you know, the group that owns the park, that's when they said, okay, we're gonna have, was it one, two and three, or A, B and C, whatever, whatever they did. Well, now, E nine-one-one is coming and saying, well.
I'm just saying, shouldn't that, shouldn't they be dealing directly with the parks and this?
And, and, and they, you would think, but the town is responsible for E nine-one-one, uh, measurements and all that stuff.
But we don't maintain that, we don't maintain those roads.
We don't maintain none of them.
No, it's private. It's a private.
I think Art's got a valid point. I don't, I don't understand why it's our problem.
We brought that up to him, but even, even private roads, look at Cob- uh, not Coburn's, but.
Whistle, uh, Westbury Pines?
Yeah, and there's different.
I remember years ago.
We, we said that's private, why do we have to do it? But we have to make sure that all the private roads have names, uh, so that they have.
They do have a name, so it's matter of the name, it's already there, the fire lanes.
Evidently is confusing.
Cause it's, cause it's, it's lane one, lane two, lane three, and that's been done since I've been on the board. Cause, cause I was on the board when that was done.
Yep.
Alright.
Cause you, that was probably before you though.
Oh, yeah.
Cause we, we went through.
We went through this.
And they came down and they said, there's an issue with the names of the roads. And we said, well, fine, we'll just renumber them.
One, two and three.
One, two and three, so that there's no confusion, and at that time, they were happy. They said, they said, we're, we're done, we don't need to do anything more.
My question to you is, at that time, they were happy. But now, all of a sudden, somebody else got involved somehow and they're not happy. That's how the state works.
But if I recall, Robert, wasn't that, uh, housing that was okay with that? And I'm wondering if.
Yeah, we had to.
Nine-one-one.
We had to have Rutland, whatever that was, the housing group that's involved with that. We had them involved in the conversation. This is a while ago, I mean, we did this four, five years ago. Four years, at least. And at the time, I, I vaguely remember, we did put up a stink, cause we said, it's not our responsibility to do this.
Then that's when they get back and they said that the state says that any private roads, you're supposed to make sure that there's for safety purposes. And that's when, uh, like on one oh-three over there, remember, we had that issue when the, that.
Well, you don't bring back our local dispatchers and we wouldn't have this problem.
You've got it, Robert.
I mean, let's, let's be honest.
Right on the head.
Mess everything up and put everything down in Westminster and then wonder why we have problems.
Yeah, exactly. And the trouble is, you know, people blame a dispatcher, dispatcher has no idea.
No.
They don't know.
I don't, I don't blame them, I blame, I blame the state for screwing up the whole system.
Oh, yeah.
Because the state's the ones who decided, well, we can cut money here, and they did it at the cost of our public safety.
Right, right.
Westbury Pines had to get changed, cause that was fire lane, same as Coburn's. It was two fire lanes.
Yeah, right.
Other than that.
Well, I mean, the, your other option is just to go Cob- Coburn Park one, Coburn Park two and Coburn Park three.
How about Bob, Cash and Mike, how about that?
But I mean, I mean, I mean, the reality is, it.
Mike Road.
Cash Road.
It needs to be kept simple.
Ash, Maple and Oak. Let it go with that.
I, I, I mean.
Bubble gum, spearmint and Wrigley's.
I really think a lot of this come about, cause way back, when we first went in nine-one-one, remember, we had the problem with the East Clarendon Road and East Street?
Right.
And they don't want them so similar.
Yeah.
Is what it, I think is where it's all leading back to.
But, but you know, you and I both know, that'd be one thing if they weren't right together. But you pull into Coburn Park, they're all right there. If something's on fire, you're gonna, you're gonna know the glow in the sky over where it is.
Exactly. But it still, it goes right back to nine-one-one, wanna control what we do.
Sure. I, I, I mean, it, there's nothing to do tonight anyway, we're just getting sidetracked on it, but.
Yeah. Um, so let's.
Say no, say no, we like the li- the roads the way they are and that's it.
Yeah, what's, what.
I'm good with that.
I mean, we've done, we, we have. We have done that before. We have sent the state a letter and we've said, we're leaving it.
We have, well, I would say that we've already done this once and for the record, it's one, two and three.
At their satisfaction at that time.
Right.
Could you put a sign there that says lane one, lane two?
I think they are, aren't they?
I don't know, I don't know if they are.
I don't think so.
I don't remember seeing these signs.
Not sure.
Cause I had to go down there with the CV crew, or with Green Mountain Power Crew.
No, there's been no problem, the state is pushing this.
Potential problem.
They're creating a problem.
Creating job security for somebody.
We can, we can always notify them, I don't care whether, with a phone call or by letter, and saying that the roads are already numbered, one, two and three. The mail comes to a grouped mailbox.
Yep.
Area.
That's true too.
And so, um, if nine-one-one is having an issue, the town has already dealt with that issue, one, two and three. And have the state, if they don't like that, contact the owner of the park and have them name them. Because otherwise.
We're satisfied with it.
Yeah, we, I don't think our fire department has any issues going down there. Uh, if there's a call for an ambulance or something, you know, I'm thinking that.
It's quite obvious.
Well, if Cash is number one street and I'm number two, Robbie, you're.
Since Bob was the other one, I wasn't listed.
Not enough streets.
No.
But how come I gotta be number two, you know what that means? Thank you, Art.
Let's not be smart.
You try harder, Mike, that's why.
Alright. No, we, we. No, we, we have a direction, kinda. Uh, new business, request for funding for zoning administrator training.
Uh, in the interest of time, I'll just make the motion that we go ahead and approve our portion of, uh, the training for Jeff Byasusi, uh, who wants to attend the seminar, uh, in October on zoning and land use.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, I have a note here. Richard Cormier wanted to be here tonight to get an update on the status of the junk on Walk 'Em Out Road. That's probably that trailer just before Tier Road. Um, we sent the.
I wasn't sure. I presumed that it was that, but.
The, the, as far as I know, they sent the, that sergeant from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
Plus the young lad who was up there, and they had a long talk with those people about cleaning the mess up. I don't know what ever became of that. Nobody ever got back to me or anybody else in the town hall that I know. Have anybody contacted you?
I haven't heard anything.
All I know is that they went to, uh, the property, and that was the message I got from both Steve and then later on, that sergeant had called me and said, but he didn't give any kind of report. He said that they let us know what transpired. I haven't heard anything. So.
Um, it also appears that Jeff is asking, just reading his letter here, that he wants an update to permitting fee process and a change to the fee schedule a little bit.
Yeah. Because he just wants that five dollars a shot, right?
Yeah, I, I personally, just because I, I'm just seeing this tonight, I would like to make a motion that we table that until our next meeting so that, I'd really like to look at what currently all the documentation says so I can compare it to the new one. Do you, Gloria, on file though, do you have the current, like?
I don't know what he's talking about.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to table it for tonight, if that's, that's, my, my motion is to table it for tonight because I think we need to research it a little more.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It was seconded by Cash. Yes.
Isn't, is he a, um, zoning administrator for numerous towns?
Yes, five towns.
Is, so are, we're sending him to school?
We split it. We're, we're just paying for our portion. We're paying.
He left most of the towns and then went to just one town, focused on Middlebury or?
My understanding is he's still us, Castleton, and Wallingford.
We go to those plan expression meetings, so.
Tate-Pittsburgh's on there.
Westroly also.
Brandon, Clarendon, Pittsford, Wallingford, and Westroly.
Thought he left.
Mike, on those fees, I would look at what Gloria hands out for the permitting process, what they charge. Because I remember Danny didn't want square footage to be charged at all. And I think it's a two cents charge, so it hasn't been corrected.
And what this is, this is proposing to eliminate two cents per square foot.
Okay.
And just to make it a five dollar fee.
Do a five dollar fee, but I, I want to make sure, because this, this is a totally updated document, and I want to see what we currently hand out.
Right here is a third one.
No, I, there's, there's more to it than that. That's, that's us.
Sent something to you guys a few years ago.
The last time it looks like this has been touched by us is two thousand sixteen.
I think that's when they sent it over.
But this lists revised April of nineteen, so this must be Jeff's revisions?
I guess.
But we never saw it in April, to my knowledge.
Probably what they sent over though.
To.
To you, because they were mad because you didn't deal with it.
But we didn't approve anything in April.
Yeah, that does say.
Well, we have to approve them, so. Parker, I don't like it that one.
Right.
Matt never used to be there.
Gotta be on the agenda next time.
Yeah, we gotta do some research.
Yeah. Wouldn't shock me.
Cost me a swipe at a couple of those because of.
Alright, so that's been tabled. Town office report. Treasure, do you have anything?
Um, just that we're going to be printing and mailing out tax bills tomorrow.
I heard there was going to be some reward.
I'll back up to George.
There's, there's no rewards, and it's, it's actually, the Select Board is the responsible party for doing, uh, bills. So we expect all five members to be here to stuff envelopes and.
You're gonna teach my history classes?
Green people at court for me?
All that time between midnight and six, what are you doing then?
If you're not done after three, I'll be here.
About brownies?
Depending on what time you get done.
Rumor I heard.
I'll be here by three thirty.
You don't have to talk to George.
Please. And here I thought I was gonna.
George's cardboard brownie.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're talking ten o'clock.
Yeah.
So I'd probably be available, I'm believe you, Bob, you're gonna come down.
I won't be.
Cash is gonna come up.
Cash has got nothing else.
On his coffee brand.
Rick, you gonna?
I am working tomorrow. Retired but working.
Looks like it's all you, Mike. Thirteen hundred bills, get ready.
Alki lives down the road.
Bring that dog back to lick the stamps.
You know, a little bit of public, uh, come on up and help out.
Public service, Alf?
I'll be here.
Huh?
Yeah, just wait for me. I'll be here.
Coffee with cream and sugar and donuts.
Alright.
Yeah, just, just, uh, hold your breath.
Gloria, do you have anything that you'd like to?
Just our, our clock.
Uh, did everybody see that clock inside?
We got a donation.
Remember we had. Art, thank you for, uh, coming down here and putting it up on the wall and stuff. Good job.
Didn't see it this morning?
Huh? You didn't?
Art, how's that hung? I know there's a clip on the back of the clock, but how did you, because that's a chimney there.
It's got hard nail.
Real hard nail.
It, I, I put a, a toggle bolt in there, and when I drilled through, you had this sheet rock, but then there was something behind, and I don't know what it was, but it was soft.
So I bet they.
The old chimney.
Because if you go up into the attic and look, that's a brick, laid up brick chimney.
Well, there weren't no brick there.
Do you remember any of that, what that used to look like?
I don't ever recall a chimney on that end.
Oh, if you.
Chimney here.
If you go up there and, and it's on an angle because the arch.
That one right there.
Got chimney here.
What about that? Is that considered chimney there?
They used to be chimney because the big stove upstairs was piped into it.
Yep, and so, but if you go outside and look, there's the chimney sticking up through the roof. But the, and, and it's back, it's not like the usual one on the end of, on the east. But if you go upstairs, you gotta bring a flashlight and look, and it's laid up.
Well, they laid them up so they hit the center of the peak, yeah.
So.
Center of the roof, yeah.
Okay.
Clock ain't going anywhere, that's all.
No, that's good. Um, Janet, do you have any other reporting?
Nope.
Okay, um, then we have an executive session.
Do you want to go through us first so that we can send William home?
Concerns?
Yeah.
Do you have any concerns?
Not really, just, uh, just to report last Wednesday night, Solid Waste District was supposed to have had a meeting.
Yeah.
As usual, not a quorum. They rescheduled it for this week. I'm gonna try, but I won't guarantee because I gotta be in Lebanon.
Yeah.
At four, at four o'clock, so it's gonna be close if I make it. That's all I got.
Do you have anything, Cash? I'm good. Bob, do you have anything?
Um, just thank you to the many townspeople and all of you all who have extended your sympathies over the last week or so. We, as a family, appreciate it, and we're moving on to a new normal, and it's a passing of a generation, that's for sure, so.
It is. And we are sorry to hear that. She was a nice person. I haven't talked to her in a couple of years, but I remember Ed and Em used to bust my ass about being a flatlander. She used to settle me down by, come on in the kitchen, have a cup of coffee. Rick, do you have anything?
Well, I echo, uh, Robert's words as well. Tough time right now, um, but, you know, we'll get through it. Our family has really come together, which is nice, um, to, uh, take this situation on, and, um, it's, it's a good thing. Uh, another point, I just want the people of this town to know, and I will be informing the Sheriff's Department, it is illegal to mow your grass into the road. And I've seen it a half a dozen times, and I'm gonna start letting the Sheriff's Department know about it. Warnings first and then write them up. You know, the motorcycles are, are the ones that are most at danger. Uh, it's illegal, just like snow, uh, and I'm gonna ask them to, when the snow starts to fly, that same thing. It's the same, you can't put stuff in a road. And so just want the town of Clarendon and whoever watches this, no. And that's a no-no.
Alright, I wonder if there isn't some ordinance that you couldn't get a copy of, and we could put it on the website or something.
It's state law, state law.
Well, can you get a copy of it, just?
I'll find out what the, yeah, what it's under, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, if there's nothing else, I'd like, I'd entertain a motion of going to executive session.
Make a motion, go executive session.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?